I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions on the minutes from last meeting?
There was only one and it was probably a typo was what it mentioned, the meeting was at six thirty and it was at six.
Oh, okay.
Probably, you know, probably a typo.
I didn't even see that. David, next meeting, January fifth, are we okay with that?
I have a question about whether or not we can meet during the day as we are today.
I second that question.
I'm good with it most of the time.
I'm good.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'd much rather do it during the day.
Oh, absolutely.
What day would we like?
It's up to the board.
Well, what's convening?
The only stipulation is that obviously since it's an open meeting, it has to be while the library is open. So it couldn't be, you know, Tuesday or Thursday before eleven. Other than that, I don't have any standing meetings otherwise, I would have to just check the room to see whether or not it's available. Tuesday, Wednesday are our busiest days in the mornings, but it all depends.
We all got here today on a Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about?
And Linda's here on Monday.
Yeah.
Would it be possible for us to meet before the library opened on Monday?
And it's not an open meeting.
Oh, it's not an open meeting.
We'd have to open the library early. I'd have to check into it. As long as the building is open, the public has to be able to access the meeting. So if we pop the side door, we might be able to do it that way, that still would constitute an open town meeting, or an official town meeting.
But now at noon time on a Monday, you and Linda were both here.
Yes.
What about ten o'clock on Monday? Both here? Just look at the.
Not me. Monday's my late night, so normally I don't come in until eleven thirty and then I'm here till eight.
Do we want to do noon on Mondays?
Sure.
That's all right.
It's me.
Okay.
Except we can't do next month.
No.
Well, January second.
I mean, if you guys want to pay us holiday pay, I mean.
Well, we don't always meet in January and February. Do we meet, Linda, what, in the middle of January or is it when we meet in January and skip February?
I think we've done, we've done it both ways, I think.
So it would be up to you whether you think we need to meet in?
I think we've met in January most of the times.
And then skipped or?
February, okay.
Because the weather's worse.
You want to meet the ninth, which is the second Monday?
That noon.
That noon?
Twenty twenty-three.
Is it able to break that right away? I'll forget.
Oh, that's nice.
Same pen.
Okay. Yeah, that should be fine.
And then going forward, it's the?
If I could actually thank you guys, because that makes it a lot easier for me, because those eleven hour days, when we have the meetings on a Thursday night are rough. So thank you.
So going forward, it's the first Monday.
So one nine.
Well, this one's going to be one nine, but going forward.
That's what I said, one nine, at what time?
Noon.
Twelve.
Noon.
Yeah, okay.
If we made it the second Monday, it might be a little bit, with being the first Monday, more often than not, we probably won't get all of the numbers. For example, today, we still don't have the circulation numbers yet. So if it makes any difference to the board.
Second Monday?
Second Monday's fine with me.
Okay.
And did he have first written down yet? Oh, I like, I like daytime meetings better.
Absolutely.
I'm usually starving in the evening when we eat.
I agree. If it makes you feel any better, the friends have actually started having people bring me snacks for the meeting, because otherwise I get a little grumpy. So they actually have somebody who makes sure there's a little bit of food to feed George, so he doesn't get too grouchy during the meeting.
All right, correspondence.
Okay, so we've got a stack. The first one in your packet is a save the date for the legislative breakfast. I know for a couple of you, this might be new, because we haven't done one too recently. Last year, we had one that was virtual, so it was kind of interesting. Basically, this is a kind of a get together that we do every year to raise awareness with our state legislators, the state senators and the state reps, about the importance of libraries and funding the libraries at the state level. So this is why we were able to get an increase in our state aid this year of five thousand dollars, because the state, you know, put more money into the pot for libraries in the state budget. This year, we're going for an additional ten percent increase in all of the lines that go to the libraries. So that would mean an increase in state aid money, as well as an increase in the money that goes to support sales, as well as an increase to funding that goes to paper ebooks. So this is the first one in, I guess, three years that's actually going to be in person over in Somerset. It's not a mandatory attendance, if anybody wants to come. I cannot guarantee it's going to be a good time, but we try to make it as good as it can be. It's a little dry and I'm personally trying to do what I can, because the reason that I joined this committee originally was because I hated the food. Because the last time I went to one, it was just fruit and bran muffins. And I was horrified, so.
Food is enticing.
It is. Currently, I'm outvoted on the committee, but I'm doing what I can to have an actual decent breakfast spread and not just that.
Way back, it used to be at a restaurant, it was a good breakfast.
Yeah. It's one of those things that in order to save money, they started having it at libraries and then the food declined.
And the state reps paid for it.
Yeah. So nowadays, usually there'll be a hat that's passed and sometimes friends kick into it and trustees, you know, if they have discretionary funding, might kick into it. But, you know, our budget being what it is, I would not recommend that. So, but, it's going to be in Somerset, so if anybody wants to go. We're still trying to finalize the list of speakers, but they're going to be different people talking about different priorities for the state, cybersecurity, trying to protect our computers, things like that. Right now, we're trying to finalize a speaker who's going to come in and talk about censorship in the school libraries. We haven't had an issue with it here, but there are several other towns within a half hour drive of us that have been having serious and persistent issues with some books and challenges. So we're trying to get someone to come in and talk about that. We'll see if, and then some other ones too, but we'll see.
Okay.
Is it recommended that we reach it to them if we plan on coming?
Just to get a rough head count, if you want to, this is actually a save the date that was sent out to the library directors. There'll be another one going out to everyone else, but I just wanted to give the date to you all, just in case anybody did want to go over. The next one is really cool, and this is one of those projects that we've been working on and I'm really happy to see it bearing fruit. As many of you know, Robyn has been doing a lot of research projects with the history and getting things out there. The Dartmouth Historical Art Society, which works out of the old Russell's Mills School, down in Russell's Mills, has a two-volume publication of Quaker records going up until the seventeen eighties, which includes when Westport was still part of Dartmouth. They've been working on this with the Colonial Society of Massachusetts, trying to get all the records together, raising money and getting it not only digitized, but also bound as a book. And they're actually giving us a set of these records for free.
Oh, fantastic.
For the historical record. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And the other really cool thing is because of the close work we've been doing with them, they've invited us to do a presentation to their society members about the history room and the records that we do have and the resources we have available. So we're really excited about that.
Good job.
I'm going to have to work with Robyn, because there's so much in that room, it's kind of hard sometimes to drill down and advertise to folks, especially in terms of like the Quaker history that we have and, or the Friends history that we have in town and all of that. The third piece, which I didn't put into the pile, because I was afraid of them getting lost, if anyone's interested, the first meeting of the Westport Writes Together group was actually a resounding success and exceeded their meeting expectations. So this is the prompt for the next season in the Westport Writes Together group. Each season, there's a different writing prompt. Yours truly was actually featured on the website for the fall, so I'm very proud of that.
Is that done here?
Yep, they're hosting it here, then it's also online. It's a pretty cool, I got to say, it's working well. So if anybody wants to do a little bit of writing, there's that. You can also submit it to them online on their website as well. Funded by the Westport Cultural Council.
Very good. Is that it for correspondence?
That's all I got.
Well, we'll go right into directors.
Okay. So being kind of close to the beginning of the month, unfortunately, I don't have the circulation number yet, and I didn't have time to grab the attendance numbers from Linda. But we did have ten meetings of the different storytimes, so I'm sure she can get us those numbers. Door count did dip this month, but as we're, you know, now into the colder months, it's to be expected a little bit. So the door count goes down, foot traffic goes down. Our Facebook followers are going up, thanks to Amy's continuing good social media outreach. Her last TikTok video, I was very impressed to see, actually got eighty likes, so it's a good number.
Now, is that recorded on you or is it just Facebook?
Just Facebook for now. I'm trying to figure out a better way to kind of report on the social media without breaking out of the whole thing. But basically, we have three major social media streams, Facebook, Instagram and the TikTok. The TikTok is actually, I really like it a lot, because it's, basically anything she posts on TikTok, she also posts on Facebook as well. But Facebook is really, I'd say naughty, not naughty, but basically what they do is if something isn't native to Facebook, they don't let it go as far in their fancy algorithm. So they, what do you call it? Promote stuff that's from Facebook first, so if you put some, share something from somewhere else to Facebook, it doesn't go as far. So we've got to figure out a better way to go straight to Facebook, so it gets more seen, basically. Meeting room attendance was up to forty-five. We had a very big bump in meeting room use as we get into colder months, so that was interesting to see. Unfortunately, we did have a dip in registered patrons. That's just as old accounts get cycled and washed out. We didn't add enough new cards to offset the number of cards that we lost this month, unfortunately.
Do you know how many we lost?
Six. So, it's still not terrible, because I mean, last month, we had forty-six hundred, this month, we had forty-five ninety-four, which is the exact same we had in September. So if we just had six more library card registrations, it would have evened out, but alas. But still, we added twenty-nine new library cards, so that's still a good number, I'm happy with it, but.
Do people have to live in Westport to get a library card here?
No, you have to live in Massachusetts.
Okay.
So.
So I could encourage people to get library cards.
And we highly encourage people from other towns in Massachusetts to get cards with us, because if they live in a nearby town and they check out one of our books here, we get money from Boston for that. So the more Dartmouth, more Fall River, if you can even get somebody from Free Town to come over, it's literally either fifteen to eighteen cents per checkout item. So, tell your friends. It's one of the fastest ways we can actually increase our state aid, is literally just to get people from the neighboring towns to use us instead, which is why we always pump up and promote our amazing customer service, because our customer service beats everybody and that's what you call it. And then our volunteering and number of hours went back up as we had some folks who came back from vacation. I'll let Linda talk about her kids' programs. As you noticed from my lovely attire this morning, we had a staff exposure to COVID. With the updated CDC guidelines, if you just have an exposure, you don't have to stay home. You just do have to mask for up to ten days and then test, I think it's two or three days in a row, five days out from exposure.
Do you have any tests available?
We have many tests.
I just called.
So, if you noticed, there were a large amount of tests, those actually came over from the school. So those were extra ones that the school decided they didn't need anymore, so they gave us seven boxes of additional COVID tests. We gave a couple to the COA, because we didn't need them all, and it's been going very well. People are very receptive. We have them out on the front desk, they're taking them. So it's test, test, test.
Linda?
I'm not done yet. I got more.
Sorry.
Page two. The oral history project with the New Bedford Willing Museum and the Historical Society has ended. The recording station broke down for about a week or so, and so until we could get somebody from the museum to come out and fix it, it was down, so they added some days at the end. We only wound up getting two people to actually record oral histories, but it's still one more than New Bedford did, so I'm counting it as a rousing success. We had an incident with a group that had been using the meeting room, they showed up unscheduled to use the room, and we had another group here. The second group was very kind enough to move to a different spot to accommodate Group A, despite Group A being very rude. I was not present that day, I was, that was my holiday day for Thanksgiving, but I have to applaud the staff for managing it very well, and Group B for also managing it very well, better than I probably would have been there instead. And as a result of that, Group A will no longer be allowed to use our meeting room space.
Is that permanent?
I'm glad there was a consequence.
Yes.
Absolutely, Susan.
Do we have a key that shows what is Group A?
If you guys want to ask me after, you can ask me after.
Okay.
Is this like one of the rare, rare times that we ban somebody?
You need to know.
Not a person, it's a group.
Well, a group.
But yes.
Yeah.
The behavior was so egregious in that stead, presuming to show up and expecting the room to be available and taking exception when it wasn't. No, we're done with that.
Does everybody, who reserves a room?
It's myself and Linda, so.
So you don't really need a list, you know who they are?
We know.
Okay.
They've been communicated with, they were apologetic, but needless to say, actions have consequences and that's that. Since implementing our updated hotspot policy, the hotspots have been checked out once with seven people from surrounding towns being turned away from checking them out. We also had an interesting one where there was a gentleman who said that they had split residence between here and Fairhaven, and he was able to produce mail with the address here, but he hasn't actually checked it out, he was just asking if he could. So that one was a little weird.
This must be a summer home, Westport.
Yeah, but this, it's like the second address being in Fairhaven was the weird thing, so it's like, I don't know. So to try to reach out to more persons in town to make them aware of the service, I actually reached out to the Westport Food Pantry, thinking that folks who are using the pantry might also be able to use the hotspots. So we currently have a request in, to their board of directors, whether or not they'd be willing to circulate flyers or pamphlets with not only the hotspot, but also the different free digital resources we have available. And I'm waiting to hear back from them, whether or not their board of director says it's okay.
You've got a good idea.
Are you on that board, Susan?
I'm not on the board, but I do volunteer there, and, and they are people who are needy and probably would have trouble with internet service, so I think that's a great idea.
And that's the thing, we had another volunteer from the food pantry come in and was showing us photos of the line of cars waiting to do the pickups.
We had cars all the way down to Hicks Bridge.
Yeah.
And in the Friends meeting parking lot, we had three rows, one after another, there were like a hundred and thirty turkeys.
So I'm thinking if we can figure out a way to successfully get out to that population, I think that might be a really great.
Might get some new patrons, also.
Also true. It's one of those things, a lot of the times when I meet people in town, they don't realize how much we have at the library, the resources we do have. I had this amazing experience with a gentleman who I got him set up on his Kindle with Libby. His wife has fibromyalgia and she can't get out anymore, and she can't hold a book physically with her hands. So, but she can hold a Kindle propped up and use her hand to turn the page just by swiping it. So, since we got them set up on Libby, she's been reading, you know, five books a month or something crazy. So it's like one of those moments where it's like, we do so much with the technology and with the outreach to different communities, every now and then, it's nice to have that one person that it really does remind you that it can make a very big difference in a person's life.
We might include applications for library cards with papers at the food pantry.
They would pick it up and bring it here?
Yeah. Yeah. We could figure out a way to make that work. Yeah, it's a good idea. Okay. We have added a standalone computer upfront for people to be able to search the catalog. In fifteen years of the library game, I have to say, getting that computer set up is the single proudest thing I've ever done in my life. I literally spent two hours figuring out how to re-code the web browser, so that it would automatically go to the library's catalog in privacy mode, so that the second you closed it, it would wipe whatever you had put in, so you can't see what people have been searching for. And it'll automatically log them out of anything they were logged into. So, seven internet forums said it couldn't be done.
I think, George, you're having too much fun here.
You know, the fact that I spent, actually got that much of a kick out of getting it to do it, I mean, the staff was actually a little worried about me, because I started screaming and carrying on a little bit crazily when I figured out how to do it and it worked.
You got excited, huh?
Two hours, I was working on it. I mean, I digress.
Do a happy dance.
It was, it was a little more than a happy dance, but I digress. Our staff, industrial super duper copier in the back is having issues, so we've been added to, it's one of those things that, basically, one of the printer drawers is broken in terms of the paper, and it's literally, there was a hinge that sheared off with the plastic, so there's no way to fix it without really replacing the entire tray, and I have no idea what would be involved in that, in terms of cutting it and taking it apart. And it's not young as it is. Currently, the second paper tray is still working, so it's functioning fine, thankfully. But it's something that is probably not worth the money to repair, given the age of the machine, so we are on the town list to get a new super duper copier when they replace the ones at town hall, which is supposed to be this year.
Ooh, okay. So we get one from, that was previously owned at town?
No, we are getting a new one.
Get a new one.
Nice. It usually works that way.
At least. It'll be new to the town. I don't know if they're actually new copiers or if they're, you know, off lease copiers we bought that were used by somebody else, I don't know.
Do we have a service agreement with that?
We do.
And that costs us so much copy?
It's the town.
The town does it, okay.
But that, the problem is that the service agreement only covers the staff copier, it doesn't cover any of the copiers used by the public. So it's just that one copier under the service agreement, everything else is cash as cash can. But we are on the list for not just getting one of the ones that the town has surplus when the town hall replaces theirs, we're on the list to get a new one at the same time as all the rest of the town hall does.
Good.
Hopefully. With the kind loan from the chair of a ladder? Get a chair, ladder, no?
I thought it was, geez, you guys are terrible.
I was really proud of that. We got a loan of a chair from, ladder from the chair?
Yeah.
Very good.
No? Valerie thought it was funny, right?
He's in so hat now.
I've been here too long, I'm sorry. Anyways, Roland Dumas, our maintenance technician, was able to climb up to the roof with your humble servant acting as ballast on said ladder and clean out the gutters of debris to help prevent freezing. I'm still trying to find a ladder for us to purchase ourselves, so that we don't have to go hat in hand to someone else to get up onto our own roof, but unfortunately, I'm having a problem in terms of our storage ability. I was hoping we'd be able to find a collapsible ladder that could extend high enough to get up to the roof, and so far, the only ones I've been able to find are too big to easily get into and out of the shed, so.
The telescoping type?
And that was the thing, the extending ones that I was hoping to get, the biggest one I could find was only about twenty-four, twenty-five foot, which it's, you know, the only way to then get up to the roof is you have to get all the way up to the top rung of the ladder and then pull yourself up and over. So, we're going to be, keep on looking at it in terms of trying to find a better way.
How far does it go up?
You can just get up there with about a twenty-five or thirty footer, depending on which side of the building you're on. So ideally, I think we would want at least a twenty-eight or thirty, to be able to comfortably get up there without having to.
I don't think they make telescopes that big.
And that's the thing, we can get an extension ladder, but then we get into the issue of storage. So we're still looking at it, we might have to redo, we have stuff in the shed.
You never get a ladder that big in there.
But that's the problem, it's an issue.
Could you cover it and put it inside the fence where the equipment is out back?
It might not fit in there.
I don't know, we'd have to measure it out, that's the thing.
I was thinking, if you just put a couple brackets, you could keep it outside, but you need enough room where there are no windows or something to.
Yeah. So it's something that we're looking at, because honestly, I mean, I'm very thankful to Dawn, but it's one of those things that we should be able to get up there to check on stuff without having to either have Dawn lend us a ladder or call some other town department to bring something over when they have time.
I'll check and see if we have a ladder at home.
Well, my dad has one, it's more a matter of finding one that we can fit.
Then you could keep it.
Can we talk to Mike Doerr, maybe we'll borrow a ladder from them when we need to do it?
Probably, it's just, the problem with Mike is that's, depending on how busy he is, you know, I have emails to him, I still haven't heard back from him for other stuff, so. But just so you know, that is an issue that we're working on, because I feel that's something that we should.
The other part is, you said inside that, what if we lay it over top?
Yeah.
Lay it over top?
On top of the cage?
Yeah.
Ooh, that would work.
Yeah.
Put it on top and then we just bike locked it onto the cage?
Yeah, onto the fence or something, yeah.
Yeah, should work, and there would be enough air that it shouldn't mess with the air intake, that could work. We'll look into that. Good idea.
And look into donations.
Yeah, very much so, thank you. Good job. GM refrigeration came for our bi-annual system tune-up and filter replacement. Everything is working in order with no noticeable causes for concern at this time. Fire extinguishers were also serviced and found to be properly in their locations, so that was good.
Is that every month or every quarter?
The fire extinguishers, I believe it's a yearly annual inspection and such. Last week, with two days notice, I presented to the capital improvement committee about our upcoming need to replace the HVAC system. They were very supportive in the meeting, and currently, we are looking at being included in the FY twenty-five Green Communities grant. Although Mr., is it Baker?
What's his name?
The selectman who used to be the PIN com rep for the library before he became a selectman.
Oh.
The brewer, Mr.?
Brewer, thank you.
Brewer?
Mr. Brewer asked me one question in the meeting, which I have to run by Dawn, he wanted to know whether or not we'd have, we could replace one of them, but not all of them, in terms of the units, I wasn't sure.
We'd have to pick out the oldest one, I guess.
Yeah, but in terms of the system, I wasn't sure if that's something you could do or not, because we installed them that way, but I don't know.
I think we need to look at the newer technology myself.
I agree.
Instead of replacing one of those, let's go with something else.
And that's the good thing about the Green Communities grant, so that would be, you know, a high efficiency and all that.
Because the president administration is putting a lot of money into the rebates this year.
So basically, what they said.
Anything using the heat pump, they're like, some of the towns, some of the towns in this state, you can get up to ten thousand dollars for your house.
I qualified for three ten thousand dollar rebates if I did three heating systems.
Wow.
For math sake.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of money available, whether we can get into it this year with the town.
This year we can't, so this year, everything is already spoken for in terms of FY twenty-four. So FY twenty-five, there's five hundred K that's available to the town. So as of right now, basically, we're currently working off of a quote that Dawn had helped put Sue, helped Sue put together last year or the year before, and we've just been increasing it three to six percent per year, the estimates. And we've just been increasing it three to six percent per year, the estimates. So right now, it's about eighty-six thousand. By next year, you know, it might be up to a hundred. But if we wind up also saving money off the electrical bill at the end of it, it's, you know, money that's gonna save us money in the long run. So otherwise, we have to just wait and see what would be available in capital improvement outside of that grant, but they were very supportive of putting us on that list, at least at the meeting. So I was happy with that. And that's what I got. Window.
Well, story hour. The last two will leave this week on Tuesday Monday. It's a good thing we started the left back up again because that's the group that comes hopefully, the same faces every week pretty much. And it's basically a group of little girls with either moms or, or in one case grandma or dad will bring them. The other group, it's basically grandmas bringing the older kiddos. But they tend to be the smaller group, I think, because a lot of preschoolers now either go to preschool or they're at a home where, you know, they're taken care of all day for both parents to be able to work. So that's the smaller group this year. But there are familiar faces, so basically I have about ten in each group that you can count on to come each week. And we're gonna take a break and start up again the second week in January. And then that will be the second session. We also have, the friends of the library have contacted Mad Science again. And they're gonna come the Thursday night of February school vacation. And if it should be inclement weather and snow and if we have to close, then they'll come that following Saturday. So that's the plan. Long term, they've also booked Dan the Lego Man to come again the first Saturday in April at eleven. And Denise tells me they've also booked the Toe Jam Puppet Band to come back in June. And I'm not sure of the date of that, but I'm sure it's at the end of June for an outdoor show to kind of kick off summer reading again. And then George and I have a couple of ideas for summer reading that, programs that he's had before that he'd like to see us do. So that's, that's the plan for two more programs during the summer, like in July and August, probably. We'd like one to be an animal program for sure. And then the other one would be, there's a large blow up whale that comes to visit and.
Life-size. Life-size blue whale.
Life-size, okay. Do you wanna explain it a little more?
And that's it. It's a life-size blue whale. It's fantastic.
Yeah.
It did the rounds last year. And some of the other local libraries, Fairhaven had it, New Bedford had it, a couple other libraries, and I was very jealous. So this year, we're getting that dang whale.
Is it alive?
No, it's inflatable.
I wasn't sure if it came in a tank.
I think supposedly you can actually like walk.
Big tank.
Somebody told me you can actually walk into it. I don't know if that's true or not, but we'll see.
Yeah, but in the past, there's been one that you could go into, like in a group of twelve.
Well, the Whale Museum had a giant inflatable whale heart. You could go into and see all the chambers. I don't know if they still do. But I'm getting that dang whale.
So that's our plan for the summer.
Well, it's my Azurian blood bubbling up. My wife and I, the first time we went on a whale watch together, I was looking at him popping up and I think my wife saw a gleam in my eye. She was like, George, you kinda wanna stab it, don't you? And I was like, yeah, yeah, I kinda do. But I digress, I'm sorry.
Yeah, a whale watch is a, is a fun thing to do. So that, that's kind of it. We, this coming Saturday is our, our last program for the year. And we have Mr. and Mrs. Claus coming. And that's the Mrs., well, Mary Ann Gulat and her husband are Mr. and Mrs. Claus. Mary Ann's gonna read some Christmas stories. And he's always been good to let the kids tell him what they would like for Christmas. And we told them this year the tree would be up and if somebody wanted a photograph with Santa or Mrs. or both, they could stand by the library tree and have their picture taken. Parents could do that on their phones these days. Everybody can take their own picture, which beats the price of what they'd have to pay if they went to a mall to see Santa. And I don't think our line will be as big. And Bonnie's mom has put together a hundred bags, like the grab and go bags of Christmas ornaments that she purchased for eighty percent off after Christmas last year. And the plan is that either the children can stay and make an ornament, one to put on our library tree and one to take home, or the parents are welcome to do a grab and go, just to take the plastic bag with the directions and make it at home. Because time, you know, this getting close to Christmas is really important for folks. So that's our plan for Saturday. They're coming from ten thirty to eleven thirty. And we'll leave these tables up so the older kids can decorate here. We've got the little tables in the other room and then we'll, Roland will just put up some chairs and we'll have the carpet squares down for the little guys. So that's, that's it for me.
New business, George.
Friends update. Friends update first.
Sorry.
It's okay. And then we had some questions at the last meeting about how much money the friends have actually donated. So this is a calendar year review of how much in 2022 the friends have given to the library or spent directly on our behalf in total. At their last meeting, they sent, gave us another five thousand dollars for replacing our public computers, which is included in this as well. So basically, they've actually doubled the amount of money between last year to this year that they gave to the library. With their increase in fundraising because of being able to resume the book sales as well as an increase in the membership rates. Hopefully, we'll be able to stay out this path going forward, but, you know, we'll see. It all depends on, you know, everything else.
So do those categories get added together to get the total?
Those are the categories that the friends use for their accounting, for what they report to the state. I personally don't like some of how they break it up because there's some overlap between library improvements and transfer to libraries. Because there's some stuff.
Is transferred to library books and stuff like that?
Is it fifteen thousand dollars?
Pretty much, yeah. Total. It's actually a little bit more than that. But some of the library improvements were stuff that they bought directly and then donated to the library in kind, such as the Corrig or some of the plants and flower pots we have out front. The friends purchased the flowers and the planters themselves. So there's a little bit of overlap between the transfer to library and library improvement. But I wanted to share with you what they have in their books for their numbers, not the way that I track it. The museum passes, one, obviously, that's the, that gets sent directly to the museum institutions. They paid that on our behalf most of the time. Sometimes they give it to us and then we pay it, but most of the museum passes, they pay directly. And then programming, usually that, those monies go straight to the performer typically. So like I said, at their last meeting, they gave us another five thousand, which we will be looking at next.
You look at the, they specifically want that for computers, right?
Specifically, that was earmarked for replacing the computers.
All right, George, new business.
In front of us, we now have three different quotes. Two of the quotes are for the same computers. The third one is for a different kind of computer. The Best Buy one, I wouldn't recommend we take it, but I wanted to show you just kind of like a baseline price so you could see if we went to Best Buy and bought these computers. The little guy down in the bottom right corner cut off the price, but it's five-two-seven-nine-ninety-six for the Dell OptiPlex seven thousand. The two other quotes we have, one's from B&amp;H and the other is from Sales, the library network buying from Dell. So the OptiPlex seven thousand is about double the power of the computers we currently have. It still is using Windows ten, but it is powerful enough that it could upgrade to Windows eleven if we wanted to going forward.
Which one are you on, George?
Yeah, these are all.
So B&amp;H.
No, they sit together.
Are you past all the ones for B&amp;H?
Well, I'm kind of just talking about both of them at the same time, I'm sorry. Like I said, I ran out of time trying to get these all clipped together. I apologize for that. So this is the B&amp;H and then the Sales starts with the PC order from Ginny Barrowby. And then the Best Buy one is just one sheet.
And Sale.
Yep.
Which one, which one is your best purchase?
Well, it's, it's a.
Are you comparing Apple to Apple to Apple?
Yes. Well, we're comparing, we're comparing limes to lemons, but not necessarily bad lemons. It's just a question of what we wanna do. So the B&amp;H quote is a slightly less powerful computer, but it winds up being twenty-eight eighty as opposed to the five thousand from Sales. The Sales is a more powerful computer. And then I was going over the difference because one is twelve gigs of RAM, the other one is sixteen gigs of RAM in terms of computing power.
Right.
I talked to Paul Cabral and I kind of ran it by him because he was, used to be a former library trustee who was in tech purchasing for the state. And he says more RAM is always better. And then I was really going over the two different quotes and I think we should go with the Sales quote. And Paul kind of agreed with me because the Sales computers come with a three-year warranty, whereas with B&amp;H, it's only a one-year limited warranty.
So this is Sales.
So the Sales quote, it winds up being forty-nine fifty-two, which is for four computers and that also includes Microsoft Office and also installation and configuration, which is not included in B&amp;H. So that would also drive the cost up some.
Is Microsoft included or are the other two?
Microsoft is not included in B&amp;H. So I think between the two, we're getting a better deal with Sales, especially considering that it includes customization and installation as well. The downside is that there was a bunch of other libraries that also put in for new computers at the same time. So I'm not exactly sure when we'd get the new units in and installed. But presently, our current computers have got them working. So we're not in an immediate rush, but I'd rather have them replaced before they're completely broken down, basically.
I agree, George. I think the Sales is a better, a better buy.
Do we have to take a vote?
I was so, I would say vote second discussion, is that, that's a motion, second.
I make a motion we go with the Sales quote for forty-eight, for roughly five thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
And then it's discussion.
Do you have a discussion?
Right, Amber, it's discussion.
There's no, there's no warranty on the others?
With the B&amp;H offers a one-year limited warranty on the HP computers. But with the Best Buy, they make you pay extra for the warranty through Best Buy. So I did not include that in the quote.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
But with, with the Sales one, it comes with a three-year warranty as opposed to the one-year limited warranty for the Dell.
Plus it's got the sixteen gigabyte for memory.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's got more giddy up.
It does sound like it is the better.
Yeah, especially when I got the quote from Best Buy. So off the rack, this is the same computer that we'd get from Sales. So without installation, without configuration, without Microsoft Office, you know, it's fifty-two seventy-nine. So buying them through Sales is saving us about four hundred dollars, not counting installation.
Where are we going to take the money from?
From the money the friends just gave to us.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, they gave five thousand specifically for computers.
Okay, I heard you say the five thousand.
And it worked out being exactly five thousand, so I was pretty happy with that.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that.
So we don't need to touch the last.
Came together.
Yep.
Excellent.
And in fact, I was telling Dawn that we actually received another five thousand dollar donation for technology specifically. Literally the day after the friends gave us five thousand dollars for replacing the computers. So I'm gonna use the second five thousand dollars we got for our electronic resources costs going forward. So it's really cool. We got ten thousand dollars for technology in two days.
Must have some movers and shakers out there.
So we, do we, we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. George, George.
So next up, we have the December holiday schedule. Unfortunately, with the holiday being, holidays, excuse me, being on the Sunday, we can't exactly match Town Hall. Because what Town Hall is doing is they're taking the half-day on the Friday and then closing on the Monday. So what I would recommend to the board is we take a half-day on the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first and then close the full day on the twenty-sixth and January second. That way, it'll even out between the staff, the full-time staff who are, do the half-depart day when they're not working because we have the split Friday, Saturday schedules. Will just work with me to find some other time during that week to take that half-day instead.
And the staff are happy with this or do they know about it?
They're happy, they're okay with it.
Well, it means they get Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, they can be up to do it and get ready.
It's disappointing. I will tell you that it is, it's disappointing to a couple of people on the staff because the Town Hall gets more than us in this case in that they have a nice long weekend and, and we don't. And if you travel the day before Christmas and you happen to be like, it will be my Saturday to work. Now, for me, it's not too bad because I only go a half mile up the street. But for someone who might be going out of town, it, it might be a little more problematic. Maybe, maybe they have to swap with someone else who would help.
Maybe they'd be able to switch off.
Yeah, yeah, to, to help each other. I know in the past, I remember you guys have closed for us when this came up another time for the back. And you kind of looked at it as, well, we don't have to keep the building for half the day. That, that's a little bit of a help.
On the twenty-fourth, how many people does that affect?
It's gonna affect three of us, right?
No, no, we have three people on, so.
It'll be me, Bonnie, and, and either Robin or, or Nancy or Dan, right? Because we, we haven't seen the schedule yet.
It's helpful.
Really, I couldn't find it on the shelf this morning. We were looking for it.
It was like two weeks ago.
Maybe, maybe it's a good idea to kind of check what happens on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I mean, the.
As far as what?
The half-day. How many patrons show up?
It's always been an issue because Town Hall doesn't open on Saturday.
Right, right.
So they're not open on Saturday. That doesn't, so this really has nothing to do with that.
So if we close the library, how does that affect? I know you've said in the past, we've closed it, but would we close it? How does that?
I think we did that once.
Right, at least, at least once.
How does that affect the people that won't be working?
We'd have to change the schedule so that the part-timers would have to make up their hours on a different day. Because otherwise, they wouldn't make their time for the week. So we'd have to move that around.
I think what honestly needs to happen is that someone needs to talk to the town about how it should be done.
Well, that's.
Because the dump is open as well. They, they run Saturdays and Sundays.
Because they have Tuesdays, Wednesdays off.
Now, before Thanksgiving, they had the half-day on Monday because Tuesday and Wednesday are their days off. And they were off on Thursday and Friday. That was the half-day before and the day after Thanksgiving. And Tuesday and Wednesday were their regular days off. So, you know, it, it's.
Isn't the schedule really up to us?
I don't know how the union is with that.
It's basically, closing the library during the week is, it's a, it's a gray area because technically, when it comes to emergency closings, it's up to the town administrator. Other than that, the board does set the schedule for the library. And then the town pays the staff. So, I mean, if you closed an extra half a day, that's not in the contract. It's not included in the holiday pay for the town, technically, because they're only getting a half-day for the eve day of the holiday, not a full day. So I'm not sure whether or not the town would pay it. We'd have to check.
Well, you said the transfer station gives them the day after half-day?
No, everyone gets the day after Thanksgiving. So I'm, I was just using Thanksgiving.
But about the Saturdays?
Well, they work Saturday and Sunday.
So they get paid, in this case, on the twenty-fourth.
They work Saturday and Sunday, so I would imagine twenty-fourth is their half-day. They won't work Sunday or Monday. And they're off Tuesday and Wednesday, but that's because those are their days to be closed.
Yeah, and just with the different.
So they end up working a half-day on just the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I think so.
And that's the thing, so just because of the different schedule, the different locations, contractually, on the eve of the holiday, the full-time staff get a half-day.
Right.
So this is the contract.
Next year, it won't be a problem.
Next year, it still will be because then it'll be on the Monday, so then the eve day will actually be on Sunday.
But don't we have a new union now?
Yes.
Is the, is the new union in effect here?
They are in effect, but the new contract has not been changed yet, so they're still negotiating that. So we're still under the old contract. I would not expect the holiday days to be changed under any contract amendments presently. What, next, next year, so in twenty twenty-four, once we get the holiday to Tuesday, then it'll make, it'll be more straight days.
We're still gonna do this every so often when it comes up now.
Yeah, about every five or six years. Once we get Christmas Day, New Year's Day to the Saturday is when it starts getting wonky because then some town departments are open, some town departments aren't. And it'll be up to, you know, the board to navigate parsing the.
Well, the other option is whatever people wanna switch around if other people are traveling. It's up to people to switch around.
See, it always comes up, but it's never been asked. And, I mean, nobody, really, people work. And I don't know, I think the time we did it was when we were under construction. Would that be right? When we were under construction in the holiday because everything was such disarray anyhow. Would that be right? When we were under construction in the holiday, because everything was such disarray anyhow. That we made the decision to do that, and we felt that it was justified.
And what did we do exactly?
I don't remember what we did, but we, we didn't have, let's say that half-day wasn't the Saturday. I can't be sure, I'd have to look back. But I think it was because everyone had been going through so much during the construction.
So can we take the three people that are working there and spread their hours out earlier in the week?
I think the deal is you have to work the half-day to get the holiday pay.
I'd have to check, we might be able to, but I, I know with some of the staff, you know, with their other schedules, um, it might be difficult. But, you know, basically with the full-timers, they'd have to make up for.
Don't they have to work the half-day before the holiday in order to get the holiday pay?
No.
No.
No, there's, there's no wording like that in our contract.
Well, there always was.
I'd be surprised, because most contracts I've been around, it states that.
That was the issue, too.
I don't think it's actually, that wording's in there, no.
Historically, how busy has the library been on those eve days?
Depends on the day. I mean, for example, this past Saturday, um, where we had the Saturday we were open after Thanksgiving. It was actually busy until noon, or at one or two o'clock, and then absolutely dead the entire afternoon. We didn't have, I think, like, three people in after two for the entire rest of the half-day. So it's hit or miss. I couldn't speak to it, it depends. Considering it is the eve day, I don't know.
So, there was a question, too, about the library being open the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Because the Friday is closed by the town's dictate. And people didn't want to work the Saturday, but people work on Saturday.
Just, we did work.
And the library is here.
You have to work a half-a-day, but you usually work eight hours that day, right?
Yep, so we have a couple of different hours of full-time on staff. So most of the full-time staff are forty hours now, um, Amy is still thirty-two. So with her, it's prorated down, so her day, um, is actually six-point-five hours, so her half-day is three-point-two-five hours.
I believe we also changed the times for the day, so that rather than opening, let's say, at ten, they'd open earlier. And close by, you know, later than one.
Well, now we're open nine to five anyways.
Nine to five, oh, okay, because it used to be, yeah. And so that, well, on a Monday, let's say if it were a Monday, it could be open earlier.
Yeah.
And, you know, we could make an accommodation like that, but I don't.
I think most of our staff, the getting in earlier would be harder. But it depends.
But to get out early, they might?
I'd have to check with them.
But it, it always comes up as a question.
Personally, I think this is fair, you know, it evens it out across the staff, so that we have the two half-days between New Year's and Christmas Eve. But it's up to the board.
I think we should leave it like it is, and then just let people work it out if they, yeah, have an issue with it. I mean, it, it's so complex.
Yeah.
I, I, I kind of agree with that, but let your staff work it out, whatever works best for everyone there.
I mean, it's not like you have fifty people.
No.
You know, I mean, it's only a few people, and usually you can manage to work something out. And it would save a lot of things.
Little bit, yeah, I spent.
Down the, down the road.
Yeah.
I spent a week trying to figure out some other way, in terms of like squaring it around, but this is the simplest thing, just, you know. Contractually, we get a half-day on the day, so that's what that is.
One, you need a motion for that?
Uh, just to accept the holiday schedule.
Motion to accept.
I move we accept the holiday schedule as written for December.
Second?
Second.
I don't like it, so I'm not seconding.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And was that one abstention, or a nay?
A nay. Um, I'm just basing this on the fact that the one representative of the staff looks so unhappy, that I just don't feel like this is.
You could read my eyes?
I, I just feel like, um.
No, see, I'm lucky, because my sister's house is a half-mile from me.
Um, do people have the capacity to work it out?
Well, nobody's gonna take it. Who wants it, you know? It, it happens to be my Saturday, so I will get it. And I'm supposed to be here if George isn't, so therefore, you know, I'm, I'm working, I know that.
And the next Saturday is George's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and George had Thanksgiving, so that's fair, you know, he gets stuck with the Saturday.
And, and do you know if the staff on the thirty-first is able to work it out, and they're happier about this?
Well, that's George.
Yeah, that's George.
We don't care.
But you're, but you're, you're not there alone, there, there are other people there with you.
Two other people.
Well, there's always at least two people.
Yeah, unless you're twenty-one or twenty-five, maybe thirty.
I mean, it's, it's been seconded, and it's been approved with one-nay vote, so I guess that's it.
Okay, old business. Let's go to, uh, Bee first, Ampliade. Uh, Scott has not got back to me on the walkway. I emailed him yesterday, because I haven't heard from him, so hopefully he'll get back to me, he seemed up to date with it. Um, update on the well tie-in, I do not have anything for that. Um, I have talked to Chris, he's been out to look at the tree, he's gonna take care of the big branch that is a problem, and then there's another dead branch way up.
When is he gonna do it?
Whenever he can squeeze it in.
But it's on his list.
It's on his list.
We were told it was going to be the second week in November, and then, uh, it didn't happen, so I don't know. Yeah, it was tough, because he was trying to get as much done as the, on the highway paving as he could before the frost set in.
Well, if he doesn't get it, then he'll get it in the spring.
Yeah, I think he'll get it this fall.
I'm not sure, because, um, the, the arborist, the te, that's been freelancing for the town, um, said that he's done working for the town for the winter. So he was, uh, his hours are over, or something along those lines, so I don't know when, but one way or the other.
He worked part-time for the town, full-time for the school.
Yeah.
Um, update on the teak benches, we gotta move so they look the same now.
With Carol washing and glaring at us as we did it.
And it was George's idea last month, and I agree with him, we should tie in the well project with the walkway.
Yes, that was in the minutes, I believe, yeah.
So, old business, telescope, you hit that one?
Yep, um, in front of you, you have the current policy, user agreement, and the actual form that they sign. Um, if there's anything you'd be interested in changing in the policy as it currently stands. Um, as we all know, the telescope has been returned thanks to Westport Police. Um, they were able to get it back from a family member of the person.
And that, they were at that house, right?
They were not, but the family member was able to get it.
I see number six, the patron will pay. So the patron is responsible.
Now, are they able to see this when they rent with that?
This is given to them as well as, um, a copy of the agreement.
Do, do you ever, if the telescope is taken out. Is there any kind of policy, uh, to take their credit card number, just in case?
We haven't. Um, there's no way for us to really process a credit card. Um, the town doesn't really have that unless we go through, uh, you have to set up like a portal with a vendor to be able to process it. So we have to go through the treasurers, I have no idea how we'd set something like that up, honestly.
I don't think it's really worth it for one. We only have one thing that applies to, right?
This policy, yeah.
I mean, for that dollar value, like, we don't have a lot of items that.
It depends on how you count it. Um, this is the only thing, before I started, this was the only item we had in the library that actually had replacement cost. Um, everything else in the library's collection was put into the computer at what we paid for it. Um, since then, I've gone and we start, and we are now doing, uh, cover value of items. And then if, you know, a person is in an exceptional circumstance, we can work with them a little bit. Uh, but just as a starting point of what's the literal price on the cover of the book. We do have other items, um, some of the audiobooks, we have, uh, some of the courses on tape, which would be close to this in terms of replacement value. Um, but the actual replacement value for it, we'd only actually have to pay a hundred dollars, uh, thanks to a nonprofit that donates these to a library. And then you just have to pay for the shipping costs, basically. Um, in terms of our telescope, I'm having a hard time setting up the time for Mr. Menard to come down and look at it, to re-align it. So it's not currently checkout-able yet, but hopefully in the next month, um, he's been busy, I hope he can set that up.
Um, when Roger Menard came to the library board at the time, he got us the best price on the telescope. And I believe he provided the bag that it went home in. So that it would have, we would have a way to transport it safely. And it's my understanding that he's been going to the different libraries and servicing the telescope. And that some libraries have been setting up programs, either under his direction, or however that works. And I was thinking that maybe in the spring, we could schedule him to come in and, to one of our meetings. And tell us what we could do with the telescope. Um, one of the plans we had talked about was getting an astrology group from the school. To use the, to come over, form an astrology club, so to speak, at the, which would be a library program. Um, and perhaps, I'm not sure how it works with it. But if we could have him come sometime in the spring to one of our meetings, and let us know what, what the benefits are of having the telescope.
That'd be fantastic. He's a very smart man, I mean, I had a lovely conversation with him. Um, we got to hang out a little bit when the Council on Aging was having their tech fair. Um, so I'd be definitely very interested.
Well, since we're gonna have February off, you wanna schedule for April?
Um, when do you set, um, I mean, we wouldn't have a school project this year, but we could at least listen to what his options might be.
Know what we're getting into.
Well, I could try to schedule him for, um, either February or March, just to kind of get it all.
Well, February, we're not gonna have a meeting.
Well, February, we're not having a meeting, so March, I could try and square that up with him.
March or April?
Yeah, I'd rather see April, because March will be whatever we missed from February.
Well, especially if we're working on the long-range plan, that's true. Yeah, okay, April. I'll see what I can do.
Do we need to?
He's very enthusiastic.
Do we need to go to accept this policy?
That is the policy.
Oh, it already is?
That is the policy.
So there's no changes in it?
Um, unless we want to look at it and see whether or not we want to make any changes, but.
Should we date our policies, so we know?
Yeah.
We have been going now, um, so as of now, anytime we pass a new policy or update a policy, I'm putting the date on it, so we know when it was voted on.
Because usually we put amended, such and such.
Yeah, why don't we bring this to the next meeting, so if anybody has any changes?
Yeah.
That would be good.
We could read it over.
Well, we really might want to see what his thoughts would be on our policy, or check what other libraries.
So I was talking with Don, because I was kind of laughing, because there actually is a thread going right now amongst different library directors. Um, and right now, it's pretty much split. So there's a couple that have a policy that's basically the same as ours. Um, and then there's a couple, uh, towns that actually, um, just check them out like any other piece of library, um, property. They don't have any signatures, they don't have any forms, they don't take a driver's license, they just let it ride. And I was just kind of laughing at the computer when I was reading it. But, uh, so right now, basically, the policy that we have is, uh, substantively equivalent to the majority. The one place where there is some, um, differences, depending on the libraries, is whether or not, um, there's a deposit put down against the checkout. The other policy, which we could change, which I think might be a good idea, um, it wouldn't have stopped this instance. But some libraries do have a requirement for how long a person's had their card, before you can check out something, um, the telescope. The only problem we have is, um, it's, the computer doesn't actually have the date that you created your card in it, in terms of the account. So, uh, we'd have to guesstimate backwards from when your library card is set to expire. The problem is that if you just renewed your library card, you'd have a false positive, and it would look like you have a new card, when you might have actually had your card for years. So that's something that I think could be useful, but there's no good way, unless we go in and literally start putting a note on every single library card when the card is created. Um, and I don't think.
How many do we have, four thousand?
Forty-five hundred, yeah.
Forty-five hundred?
I don't think substantively, that's something we could really do easily with the current system. Um, whether or not we wanted to put a deposit down, that would be at the discretion of the board. I think it might be, if it's too much money, if the board did want to do that, it might make it difficult for folks who would not have any other way to ever use a telescope. Um, I know personally, my family, if we had to, I, you know, if we had to put like fifty dollars down to just check out a telescope for two weeks, we probably never would do it. Because with inflation being what it is, we'd need that money.
I don't think it's necessary to have the staff involved in money.
It's one of those things that, you know, if the board wanted to do it, we'd find a way to make it work. But, you know, having, you know, an envelope floating around with fifty dollars or twenty dollars tied to a particular person for two weeks until they come in. It's kind of problematic.
Do you think we should just, let's review this, and we'll talk about it next?
You can always call it first.
Has anybody gone to that state website that, uh, that Lady Kayden gave us a presentation on?
Yeah, it's a lot.
There's, there's some very good stuff there, though.
And I wanted to say also, if anybody wanted to do, um, some extra reading, I did go out on my own, and I actually bought, um, the American Library Association booklet on long-range planning. I have it in my office, so if anybody wanted to read it, it's only about forty or fifty pages.
I've got, um, of all the ones we have, and I looked at a couple other, almost everybody has used Strategic Planning for Results by Sandra Nelson.
By what?
Sandra Nelson.
Isn't that the book you have?
I don't remember.
But I would recommend, if we don't have it, we should get it, so we can take a look at it, it really breaks down how, well, every, all these towns have used the same book. And one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four of the seven towns that we've looked at all hired a consultant as well. I don't know what kind of money that is, but they all had somebody help them.
George said it was big.
I don't know what that is.
The one I got is going for.
Okay, could we get this other book, see if we can find it?
Say it again, please?
Sandra Nelson, It's Strategic Planning for Results.
He did, he did say while you were out, George, that the other li, most of the libraries hired a consultant.
Yeah.
Of all the ones you gave me, plus I looked at like a couple other.
And most of the libraries used that reference that you just wrote down.
Which is why we can just copy their stuff and not have to pay the person.
Anyhow, I was looking through, looking at it, it's basically broken down into four parts. We can go as extensive as you want into it, some people just, it's two pages, some people have eighty pages. There's a mission statement, the user needs assessment, the goals, and the method, methodology of how we do it. That's the four areas that they break it into.
And did the plans those seven towns come up with vary greatly, depending on the needs of their population?
And, and how, one town had seventy pages, I mean, I didn't even look through all the pages.
I, I don't mean how many pages, but I mean the ideas of what they were going to do for the long term.
They were pretty much centered around the same thing. I, I like Dartmouth, Pup is the best, I mean, it's, it's very lengthy, but.
So what kind of things were they going to do for the strategic planning?
Oh, I, I don't remember.
I thought maybe you could say it in a sense.
Most of them are about, you know, increasing, increasing services, increasing programming, um, making the space useful and usable.
A lot of them talk technology. It is the way of the future, you know, you've gotta keep up with it. I mean, I was talking to my brother-in-law the other night, and he hasn't been to a bank in, in three years. I'm like, what?
I go for socialization.
But he, he does everything electronically, and I'm on the board of the credit union, and that's what we're looking at going down the road, too, because the younger people don't want to go. Into the brick stores.
No.
No, even like when I have a check, like one of the, the rebates I get from the board, if I have to pay something myself, I deposit it with my phone, I don't actually have to go to the bank anymore.
Right, you take a picture of.
But I mean, there's more and more stuff like that, because we don't even know about. Anyhow, I found this website very interesting, if no one's looked at it, they should take a look at it. Um, they give dozens and dozens of templates you can use.
What, what is the website called?
It's, uh.
MLS?
It's Massachusetts Library System?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could even.
But is there a particular?
If you just Google Massachusetts. If you just Google Massachusetts Library System, Long Range Strategic Plans, it comes up. Or I can send it around to everyone.
And her name is there.
Yes.
Was that Kristi Chadwick?
Kristi Chadwick.
Yeah, it's the Mass Library Association.
There are two of them, Kristi and another one.
And we should, when we start putting our stuff together, they really say that the first time she did her presentation is that should be start, part of our minutes that we've talked about how we get where we're going. Step one was have her come.
Which we did. And I think I'm really interested in looking at Bonnie's project.
Yep. Some of her classmates didn't put as much into it as she did, so.
Well-
I have to say, I almost started crying reading it, though, because the person who evaluated the director validated the way that I direct, and I almost started crying, like, reading it because there was like footnotes saying that what I'm doing is the right way to be a library director. So it was really, it made me feel very validated. So when I was reading through it, I started getting a little teary-eyed, so you can all read it and admire how amazing I am.
Geez, Carol.
George, you know we appreciate it.
I know, I know. Thank you. You keep me grounded. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, Don.
When does ours due? When does this thing due? Because I was reading, it says it's like October of twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, so basically, it depends. We're already past our old one, so technically right now, we're flying Scott freight. So basically, the only time it's really due due is if we wanted to- Anyways, technically, it depends whether or not we want to apply for grants. Most of the LSTA grants are program-oriented, so we don't regularly apply to any of them because we don't have the staff to really do the programming components. So the October date is if we wanted to put in for the FY twenty-five grant round. So that's the only stipulation. Otherwise, it's whenever we get to it. Because that's the only real hurdle, I guess you could say.
Well, grants are, even if someone were interested in making a donation, they might wanna take a look at what our plan is.
Oh, do look, yeah.
And I honestly would have to say that I don't think we've really worked on one other than at the end of a board meeting.
Well, the last one that was submitted was submitted in-
Yeah, but that was because of the transition we were given in, well, and Kristi-
And functionally, the last two or three strategic plans we've had are functionally the same since the, you know, basically it was having the building redone, and then since the building's been redone, they're basically the same, just updated.
Yeah.
So substantively, we haven't had like a systematic, you know, soup to nuts.
Well, the last time one was done was seventeen.
And if you think about doing it as part of your trustee meeting, you can understand that you don't put that effort in.
No, it's too much.
Has, have you sent, does everybody have copies of some of the ones that we've done, George has sent out?
I don't know if I do. I'd like to read the Dartmouth one.
Okay.
Because that's the best one.
Yeah.
And some of those ones on his website, you can actually download the Dartmouth one.
I really like the Concord one just because, you know, reading through it, but-
Which one?
That's the eighty-pager. Like, the Concord's is absolutely insane. But, you know, as a library nerd, there's a lot there to read through. Basically, it's kind of seeing, you know, you start with the mission, you start with the vision. What is it you wanna do in your community? What does your community want from you? And then what do you have available? What do you need to get? What can you get that you don't already have? And then how do you use all of that to serve your community? So then, it all flows out from there.
Because on that website, it also gives you some tools you could use to do surveys. What's that? Monkey one or whatever it is?
Survey Monkey, yeah.
Survey Monkey, and there's another one that are free that you can actually put your questions together that you wanna send out to the public.
I probably would use Google Forms, just because we already paid for it through sales, so I might as well use a resource we are paying for. And that's really cool, same way, because at the end, it'll actually take all the results and add it all together and make pie charts and all that stuff if you want for you automatically.
Some of the ones I've looked at, they do a lot of different things, and some of them, they spend so much time talking about the history of the town and everything. It's just taking up space.
Half of Dartmouth is like a history of the, but I think for us, that's important because, you know, and that was the thing when I was reading through the history Bonnie put together of the library. Part of the big reason why our library is the way it is today is because up until this building was built, there were so many different libraries in all the different villages of the town. There wasn't one library that the rich folk dumped a ton of money into, and then we can just ride off into the wilderness on the on the revenue that was generated from a hundred years ago. Plymouth is like that. When I was working in Plymouth, you know, that one library had an endowment that was so big that they literally had paid staff for the library foundation year-round that just raised money and did all of that kind of like donor finding and, you know, when you die, leave the money to here, yada, yada, yada. They had paid people that did that because they had that much money from a hundred fifty years ago when the, you know, big businesses in town dumped money into the library because that was what the rich folk did back the turn of the nineteen hundreds.
So if you look at our last missions, our last plan of service, let's think of, we have eleven pages just talking about the town and what we do. Then you have the part that is really the guts of it, is the goals and objectives of what you wanna accomplish. That's only three pages. I mean, that's where we need to put the bulk of our work in. I'm not really sure how to go about it entirely. I was wondering if we could talk about it, or I would really like if people would read some of the ones that are out there so we have a basic idea of what we're trying to get into. I mean, because I never really started reading these until like last week.
Well, I'd like to read Concord and Dartmouth.
Yeah, I'll send them all back around to you.
Yeah.
We should have a meeting separately that just along which plan and put together volunteers.
And I did forget about that when we were talking about the Friends. We do have two other potential members if we wanted to have outside people on the committee. The Friends did designate one of their members, Sue Sekke, the woman who is in charge of coordinating the book sale. Before she moved to Westport, I forget the town off the top of my head, but that was somewhere outside of Boston. Do you know that? Sue Sekke, do you remember what town she moved down from? No. It was either like Norton or Westerly, one of those towns. She served on that town's capital improvement committee. So she has experience with long-range plans and monies and things like that. So that was their designate for a representative. If the trustees still do wanna have other people on the committee as well, I will reform the committee. I do also have a interested young person, which was Laura's interest. The only problem is that I'm not sure how flexible her schedule would be. So that'd be something we'd have to look at in terms of if there was a long-range plan committee when we could meet. But she's a very studious, regular library user. It was kind of funny because I walked up to her and I was like, hey, are you interested in padding your resume? And she was like, it just so happens I was writing on my resume right now. So I think she'd be a good egg.
Yeah, one of them talks about all the different groups they've had involved. I mean, they've got teen advisory, a friends of a library person, a media person, a business person from the community, a teacher, a parent representative, trustee.
I think a lot of people in the community have different ways of looking at it. So it's good to have a certain, you know, have everybody represented, not just people who are connected with the library.
In terms of the committees, though, just speaking from my personal experience, the variety of experiences the trustees have in and of themselves, I have never worked in a library where I've seen as many trustees actively using the library as I have here. So I have to compliment all of you for actually using the building and the collection because every other library I've worked at, that has not been the case. So you amongst yourselves also have a lot higher level of knowledge of the library than most other trustee boards do already. So that's definitely a plus in our column as well.
George is right because the other two libraries I worked in, with a couple of exceptions, trustees used the library, but maybe the other four or five did not. And I also forgot to tell you that tomorrow, a man named Fred and his dog Emmy that is a Nupenoid is going to come to my story hour. And the plan is that after the first of the year, he will be our new therapy dog person.
Ah.
We haven't booked, I'm thinking a Saturday because that's when kids are available. But he's working out a time when the Butler Hospital would want him and his dog. So I might know a little more tomorrow as to when we can set up.
He'll be bigger than any of the kids.
Pardon?
He'll be bigger than any of the kids, yeah.
Because Emmy is ninety pounds. He said his uncle raised Nupenoids, and this Emmy has had two liters cesarean suction. And the owner did not feel that she should have to do that anymore, and Emmy became available. So he was looking for a dog, and he's gone through the therapy classes with her. They passed. I don't think he's done it before, but he has worked at this school before in the high school, and we did the chlorine check. Has that come back yet?
I don't think so.
Not as yet, okay.
I'll have to check with the-
The chlorine check, he filled it out. So we're on our way to having another therapy dog, and Sue Sekke, that reminded me that as her dog, she used to be out there.
These are for ordinary kids, not for kids in need of therapy.
No, this is for kids who are learning to read basically, or scared to read aloud. And it's really meant for them to read to the dog, but the parent will probably be there if the parent can sit in. I would with Fred. And the kids aren't corrected. So somebody who just wanted to look at a picture book that didn't read yet could tell the story of the cat in the hat verbally, you know, and that's what early literacy is all about. It's just liking books and learning how to use them and-
It's a non-judgmental year.
The teacher will correct you and say, no, you can't do it this way.
I like the idea of reading to the dog.
Is this word, but no one is going to say that. It's so it's just fun.
I think it was read with Rosie.
Yeah, it used to be Rosie that would come, but Rosie has, is deceased, and Sue did not choose to replace her. I tried to give her a puppy and it didn't work.
George, did you talk to Ned?
About?
Ned Daniels you had mentioned?
Not yet, just because we were waiting to see how everything would shake out.
What I like to do is form a base committee of three people, and then from that, we'll branch off other committees with other people from the trustees on it. How's that sound?
Sounds like a good idea.
And I really like if we could all like read some of this stuff because it opened my eyes to a lot of what I thought I was doing and a lot of things what I gotta do. So if we could do that for our next meeting, we could talk about that as well. Who would like to be on a committee, the first committee? I'll be on it. Anybody else? Laura, Carol? Okay, that's three.
I'm very willing to help out with any committee.
Okay.
I spoke to someone who was not, who were looking for people from the community. She doesn't have the time, but when we have a community meeting, she would very much like to be there. So I took that as a prospect.
All right, I'll get back to you with a date. And we'll meet here during the day?
I like that.
And then from that, what I feel is we're gonna take up different parts of this, and other people are gonna do their own little committees.
Could we advertise in like the shorelines or something?
Why don't we talk about that when we get together, how we're gonna get out there? Okay, other? Any other?
Nope.
How about adjourned? We do the-
I move the meeting be adjourned.
One twenty-five.
The second.
All in favor?
Aye.